This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, October 31st. Please stand for our invocation led by Father Thomas Hurd, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We spend a moment or two to come into God's presence. Holy gracious God, Creator of all that is, all that will be, all that has been. We often forget you. We often forget to come to you with our prayers. We often forget to come to you with our neglect of our obligations to you. Help us always to know your presence, to know your love for us. Help us to feel your wisdom, to feel your guiding hand upon us in this city and for this city council, that we may carry out our obligations to you. These things we ask in your holy and blessed name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rokoff, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of Rules.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone on this Halloween Tuesday Council meeting. We at this meeting, we do have rules at this time. I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones at this time, please put it on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, the ordinance appealed, or plebequer agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person desiring to speak to the council on another agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak to the council on that none agenda item would not be allowed to do so. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. Second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any member of the council who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and or plebe, I cry aloud. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of October 24th.
So moved.
Second.
And properly moved and second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone here. Appreciate you coming. They have just a few announcements. One is as part of the continuing onboarding of our annexation area, we're having to continue and continue to have community meetings. Actually, we'll be hoping hosting the second one regarding the zoning map for West Mobile of those newly annexed areas. And the reason for having these meetings is to inform the citizens out there of what we believe those zoning areas should look like and explain the process of what they go through if they disagree with what we have selected. We have proposed maps that show what the proposal is, so all of those interested in it, we hope that they will come to the second meeting. The last first meeting we had was actually held last night, but the next meeting will be at the John Archer Center, this coming Thursday. Is that tomorrow? I'm asking this, Candace.
Yes, it's this Thursday.
It's this coming, it's to be tomorrow night. Okay, I wasn't sure, just so the second, the next meeting will be tomorrow night.
It's Thursday, tomorrow.
Yeah, it's Thursday.
Thank you very much. Hello. So it's Thursday night at the John Archer Center. Begins at 6:00 PM. It's open to the public. Maps are available at mapformobile.org and comments can be submitted through the web portal or when you get there. So also today, there are a couple of appointments that have been proposed. We're hoping that the city council will approve them and indication is that they will. The first one is our new police chief Johnny Morris. It's 30. Excuse me, I apologize. Thank you all very much for correcting me. I'll see if I can get it right from here on, but there are no promises. So Chief Morris actually has a 32-year track record. He's served at every level of the department. His leadership roles include the captain district chief, administrative chief, and deputy chief. He will become the 17th fire chief and the first black fire chief in the history of the city of Mobile. He has my utmost confidence, and as I was thinking about this, Chief Morris, it must be much more prestigious to be the fire chief because it's only been 17 and I'm the 108th mayor. Okay, so obviously, if you get to be a fire chief, that you'll be here maybe much longer than a mayor, but anyway, you know that you have my utmost confidence. We wish you and your wife Sabrina and your family the very best and looking forward to you getting confirmed today. Also, another one is Rob Lasky, who will be the executive director of Public Safety. He's done a remarkable job as the head of the OPR group. He's also served as the SAC for FBI Mobile's division and then the Miami division prior to retiring in 2018. While he was here as the SAC in Mobile, he fell in love with our city and upon retirement, even though his home was Miami, he chose to come back here to live, which I think is a huge compliment to our city. Anyway, we're delighted that he chose to do that. He spent a great deal of time, his entire background actually is in between legal and law enforcement, experienced working recently here with both our police department and our fire department as part of OPR. And he also had not only has my utmost respect and recommendation this, but I think that he has earned the respect of those in Mobile Fire Department as well as the police department. So Rob Lasky will be also voted on today for confirmation. So at this time, I'd ask Chief Lemey to join me at the podium while I read a proclamation. This proclamation is written by the city council and the mayor, and it reads, "Whereas today, we honor the fire chief Jeremy Lemey in celebration of his retirement from Mobile Fire Rescue Department, and whereas Chief Lemey has served the Mobile Fire Rescue Department with unwavering dedication and commitment for the past 21 years, and whereas he has demonstrated exemplary leadership, professionalism, and compassion throughout his tenure, earning the respect and admiration of colleagues and the community, and whereas he has selfishly dedicated his time and expertise to countless community events and outreach programs fostering a strong bond between the fire department and the people it serves, and whereas Chief Jeremy Lemey embodies the true spirit of public service, consistently going beyond and above and beyond the call of duty to protect and serve the citizens of Mobile, now therefore, I William S. Stimson, along with the members of the Mobile City Council, hereby honor Fire Chief Jeremy Lemey, his 21 years of exceptional service to the Mobile Fire Rescue Department, and express our deepest gratitude for his unwavering commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. I do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 31st, 2023, as Fire Chief Jeremy Lemey Day in the city of Mobile. Congratulations to you, Chief. We've got a couple of other things here. We've been saying this over the last several weeks, but it's worth saying it again. You know, while he was either the assistant chief or the chief of staff and then the fire chief, it was ISO-1 accreditation, it was the CAS accreditation for our fire services, and the CFAI accreditation for the fire department. You know, and again, as we're the ninth fire department in the United States to have all three of those accreditations, which is nothing short of remarkable. I've said that he has to, if he's not the best fire chief that we've ever had, he's certainly accomplished more in a transitional effort for our fire department. So Jeremy, thank you for all of that. But I also have a medal here that I'd like to present you, and this is the Award of Excellence from the mayor, and you earned every bit of it. Thank you very much, Jeremy. Congratulations to you. You don't want to say anything?
I'll say something.
Well, I think you should.
Thank you, sir. Well, I'll be brief because I often look towards the future, and I certainly appreciate all of my time here with the city of Mobile and working closely with the city council and the staff and the mayor's office. This city's been very good to me, and I'll tell anybody that's looking for a career, this was a phenomenal one and one that I loved every moment of it. And I'm certainly thankful for the mayor and the chief of staff for selecting me for this position. It meant a lot to me as being a second-generation firefighter, and I told them from day one that we would not let them down, but I'll also tell you that it's because of our team. And our team is an amazing group of individuals collectively, all with their own thoughts and beliefs on how we should move forward and move this city forward, but they're the reason that these things happen. Okay, so I was honored to be the chief during their time, but I can assure you, the department is in fantastic hands and I have, Chief Morris is a fantastic leader and I believe that he's going to do a phenomenal job. And so you definitely, when you leave something, you want to make sure that the next person's going to take that and continue to build upon it, and I have no doubt that he's going to do that with his leadership. So just thankful to, so thankful to everybody. Thank you again, Mayor, for today. Just thank you for everything that you've done for me and my family, and go get them. Thank you.
I would like to say, Chief, the reason that you had an amazing team because they had an amazing leader. You will be very well missed. It was a pleasure and an honor to vote for you to be Fire Chief, and it's, you know, almost like a sad day here in Mobile to, you know, have someone, a city employee like yourself, humble individual, to leave our, you know, city. If we have more workers like you in the city, I mean, this would be, this is already a great city, but it would be a more greater city if we have more workers like you. Again, congratulations and wish you the best in your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Well, good morning. It's my honor to go ahead and introduce our September Employee of the Month, Admin Services Employee of the Month, and this month we have Stephen Nelson. He's a 28-year employee of the city, and the reason why he was nominated, he's part of a special team down there at the cruise ship terminal. A lot of people don't know that this small team there, every cruise day is able to get over 2,100 passengers off that vessel and then get over 500 cars out of that garage and then get 2,100 passengers on there and 500 cars parked all within a span from 7:00 in the morning till 3:00 in the afternoon. And Stephen's part of that team, that special team. And of particular note, this week prior to the new cruise ship coming into the terminal, our terminal got struck by lightning and caused some severe damage to the gangway and the wiring in the system, and it was because Stephen's hard work to get that all back in place, plus operate that passenger gangway with a very new ship. He was, it was a flawless day, and what I could say, a lot of that's due to Sheila and his team and Stephen here, so we want to congratulate him with Employee of the Month.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thank you. The monthly finance report will be postponed for two weeks. Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave the noise ordinance on October 31st on Elmira Street, November 18th on South Royal Street, June the 8th at Fort Condeenne, December the 2nd at the intersection of Gulf Dale Street and South Dauphin Island Parkway, November 4th on Chester Court, December 15th through the 16th on West Berry Drive, and November 1st through the 19th in Langen Park. So moved.
Second. Been properly moved and second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals, we have requests for wave the noise ordinance on October 31st on Elmira Street, November 18th on South Royal Street, June the 8th at Fort Condeenne, December the 2nd at the intersection of Gulf Dale Street and South Dauphin Island Parkway, November 4th on Chester Court, December 15th through the 16th on West Berry Drive, and November 1st through the 19th in Langen Park. So moved.
Second. Been properly moved and second and in discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Ms. Gregory?
On the request for Langen Park, just in case anybody looks at this and wonders why so long, this is the packed theater. They are doing a performance at Langen Park, building their own stage and everything. So a portion of the time will just be for rehearsals, and they will not necessarily be performing until 10:00. They will close down the performance and then have cleanup, but they're asking for the period of time from 5:00 until 10:00. So just wanted to make sure that everybody understood what was going on out there and also promote the fact that you can go to Langen Park to see this production. There's a lot of good promotion on the Facebook and Instagram, and we'll be happy to send out more. I've already had it in my Facebook, rather, in my newsletter. So again, this is the packed theater putting on a production at Langen Park, and we are happy to have them out there. As soon as the amphitheater is complete, it will be ready for performances as well, but the packed theater this time is actually building their very own stage, so look forward to that.
Yeah. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Karen McCants. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
First of all, my name is Karen McCants Alexander. I would like to thank the mayor along with the city council for allowing me a few minutes to express a concern of many small businesses, particularly in the shops of Bella Mall. After reviewing the art plan for the city of Mobile, my question to the council and the director of neighborhood development is, was the $2 million truly enough to assist very, very small businesses in the city of Mobile, and did all $2 million have to be allocated as loans for economic relief rather than grants? If this was truly the only available avenue to assist already struggling small businesses, could you please review the treatment of loans process and make sure this process is set up in the easiest manner to legitimate business, so that legitimate businesses can qualify without intimidating-type requirements? Make the process as simple as possible so that others like myself won't immediately feel like that this was not made for struggling, credit-depleted-type businesses as myself and many others. Many of us don't have a green financial background. We're still trying to build a legacy while using the same funds to build as we used to pay for food, gas, clothing, utilities, et cetera. As soon as the first dollar is made, the taxes start, and trust me, they will show up on you on the job, open or closed. I would have loved to have had that same type of greeting from someone from the city saying, "We see you. We're so proud of the steps you have taken to create additional wealth and revenue for the city of Mobile. We want to offer you these additional services, tax breaks, whatever you can do to make sure you succeed, because if you grow, we grow." I ask that whatever platform you use to assist small businesses be revisited, make it bolder, make it louder, create an advisory board for small business funding if you don't have one already, to really find real tangible help, knowing each business you help has the potential to push the city forward. As small businesses, we are your seeds that are in your soil that need to be watered by you in order to grow. Trade Pays, which is my store in the mall, has something very unique and could easily be a franchisable brand but could disappear in the blink of an eye because of existing financial obligations. Now, as I close, even if I walk away from here with nothing, I have prayed that you will always have something that you receive from me that will compel you to embrace the very, very small businesses more that need to be watered. I thank you for allowing me to speak because, see, in others, I did not want to live with the regret of knowing that I did not say a word or do anything to try to make a difference. Remember that life is 10% of what happens to us and 90% of what we do about it. Always remember, if there were no obstacles, there would be no high jumpers. Please jump higher for small businesses. Thank you again, and God bless you. I extend to you all that he will look upon you and your loved ones with grace, mercy, good health, wealth, and prosperity. Again, I'm Karen McCants Alexander. Thank you for your time. I will welcome anyone to speak with me about this because we are serious about it. We need your help. Thank you very much.
Yeah, well, hold up Ms. McCants. Ms. McCants, one second.
What actually happened? Did you have a request for ARPA funding? Sounds like you made a request in...
No, I did not have a request. I found out where the funds were, and what was happening is most of the small businesses don't have their, they can't meet the criteria. So if this is federally issued money, but they, they might as well go to their own bank based on what they have to present to get it. So most of them are backing away. Some of them would have been here today, but the mall opens at 11:00. Most of them are family businesses. They had to be there, so they couldn't be here. I had a couple of them that did come, but that's the main thing. A lot of them don't know about it, and the ones that do know about it, they look at it and walk away from it because they already know they're not going to qualify in their head. We don't know, but we need to make, present it to them in a more friendlier manner to make them feel like it is theirs.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think our partner on that was Commonwealth National Bank, correct?
They are.
For the $10 million.
They are.
I think that your concern is being immensely heard this morning. It's, as a matter of fact, it may just be divine intervention that the two of you are in the same room at the same time on the same day. He is listening to you in the back of the room. I would suggest that the two of you, before you leave today, have a conversation. Do you know who I'm talking to, talking about? The guy back there with the silver gray hair.
Mr. King.
If you would, speak to him, and if, if there's something that we can do about the criteria, I don't think we can do that. Maybe a banking issue, but if it's something that y'all could work through to where the bank can help everyone, that would be a good thing.
Okay. Yes, we can do that because it would be great if we could all meet with some of the businesses there because the mall is a dying breed. You're competing with the lot, you're still dealing with COVID, people not wanting to be in crowds still.
Yes, ma'am.
Past incidents, so they're suffering right now. God has blessed us to be better, but I felt like I need to speak for everybody.
Yeah, Ms. McCants, yeah, if you can just speak to Mr. King, which is in the back of the room, and he'll be able to greatly assist you. Anything that the city can do, Mr. King, to go ahead and insist with this matter, please let us know.
Mr. President, finally.
Ms. Gregory.
Yeah, I want to thank Ms. McCants Alexander for coming this morning. As I mentioned during our pre-conference meeting, Karen lives in my district, and you might recognize the McCants name, McCants Shavers Park. So they are well-known in the Mobile Terrace and surrounding areas, have been very involved in the community for a very long time, and Karen and her daughter had a rolling café for a number of years, and they were looking for a storefront and settled on the mall, which we were all hoping was going to be very successful, and it has been for Trade Pays, I think, but not so much for some of the other smaller businesses. So she contacted me because she was concerned about what was happening with some of the other small businesses in particular, but also for her business, and what is the city doing in order to try to help small businesses like hers be successful. So I sent her the information, and just by chance, Mr. King is here today. He is the president of Commonwealth Bank, and Jamie Roberts is in the back as well, who oversees the program here for the city. So Karen, I think it would be great if you could get some of those small businesses together, and then maybe Mr. King can meet with you all and go over what it's going to take to get those loans and to try to help everyone understand that they very well could qualify. It's just a lot of paperwork, and we understand that, but to try to help everybody be able to move forward and be successful because we want to see them be successful, and of course, we want to see that mall continue to be successful as well. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Mr. President?
Hi, Mr. Penn.
I want to join in with my colleagues. I want to thank you, Ms. Karen, for coming down. Of course, I enjoy the restaurant. I go out of town, enjoy the, you know, the Faygo drinks, some of my favorite with the icy, so I really enjoy. Thank you so much again for coming. I think you made a vital point, and what Councilwoman Gregory stated is that we probably need to maybe host some meetings with small businesses so they can get that information. A lot of times, you're working during the daytime, so you don't have the opportunity to be here at city council meetings to catch maybe when that information come out. So hopefully going forward, we can start when those type of programs come about, that we can have some meetings with our small business group, and maybe you could lead that, you know, and that will be something vital, so hopefully we can move forward with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk?
Christine Dallas.
Good morning, counsel. First, Mrs. Dallas is not here. One of her daughters is having a very difficult pregnancy, so she apologized she wouldn't be able to make it. I come here today to stand in solidarity with the Dallas family. First of all, I want to thank the council for their efforts last week to expedite this matter and try to bring some closure to it. The people are watching, and we've noticed that. We got the week we come here seeking transparency and justice, but we got the week we're given the same excuse by grand jury secrecy. But the police chief came in here with all the top brass just last week and proclaimed that Jawan's death was not directly caused by the police, and so much that these officers have been put back on full duty. Now, as if Jawan violated his own civil rights and drug himself out of that car and beat and tased himself to death, because barring any of those facts, he would still be alive today. So how do we deal with the conflict? Grand jury, officers back on duty like it ain't no thing. Why are we here? If what the officers, if the officer's behavior was so above board, why even have a grand jury? Because of politics. We, we have seen this scenario play out through history all over the country, time and time again. You know, they have a cliche that says you can use a grand jury to indict a ham sandwich, but the opposite is equally is true. If given half truths and only one side of the story, it's a, grand jury is a useful tool by DAs to let bad cops get away with doing bad things. Whatever our DA is doing, the people are not... We don't feel what he's doing. Anything he's doing is being done under the rest, and we are not confident the people's business is being done. It basically allows him to play Pontius Pilate and wash his hands of the whole situation because indicting a cop for murder is about the quickest way to get unelected, especially in Alabama in the South. So we come to you and we plore you, we need more transparency with this whole process because the people, we are not trusting this at all. All we know is Jawan Dallas has been dead for four months now. His mother hadn't gotten his car back and on his property, his wallet. She hadn't, she hadn't received any type of...
Yeah, Mr. Lockton, yeah, your time has expired. You know, and again, the council did send a letter out last week.
I saw that, and we thank you.
And we did get a answer back. Again, we cannot, I mean, the DA is over our level. So we cannot, you know, tell him what to do or force him. But I would like for the clerk to read a letter, what the DA did write to me, but you can go ahead and have a seat. Thank you so much for coming.
Appreciate you.
October 27, 2023, Council President Small. I've received your letter requesting that my office expedite the release of evidence regarding the July 2nd, 2023, death of Jawan Dallas. Like you, I am sympathetic to the Dallas family's desire to know everything related to this investigation, including when it will be presented to a grand jury. Throughout my career, I have borne the weight of prosecuting cases as family members grieve the loss of loved ones. It is never easy. In fact, it is one of the most difficult parts of a prosecutor's job. Without fail, they all desire the same knowledge. Why my loved one? How did it happen? Who is at fault? How can I heal?
Like you, I am sympathetic to the Dallas family's desire to know everything related to this investigation, including when it will be presented to a grand jury. Throughout my career, I have borne the weight of prosecuting cases as family members grieve the loss of loved ones. It is never easy. In fact, it is one of the most difficult parts of a prosecutor's job. Without fail, they all desire the same knowledge. Why my loved one? How did it happen? Who is at fault? How can I heal? As a district attorney, it is one of my responsibilities to ensure that the power of the grand jury remains in the hands of the citizens of Mobile County and that their power is not diminished by political, social, or any other outside pressure. Truth be told, that is also at times a burden. But it is my sworn duty to uphold the integrity of the laws of the state of Alabama. To that end, the Alabama legislature is clear on this point. The legislature hereby finds, declares, and determines that it is essential to the fair and impartial administration of justice that all grand jury proceedings be secret and that the secrecy of such proceedings remain invalid. Alabama Code 12-16-214. The citizens of Mobile County exercise great power through participation in the grand jury process. Our citizens have the power to indict so that my office may prosecute and they have the power to set free the innocent or those for which the government lacks the evidence to rightly accuse. I recognize that members of the public are very interested in this case. However, I do not believe that the interests of the public in this case outweigh the necessity of protecting the integrity of the criminal process or the risk of tampering with our grand jury. Therefore, the date, time, and place of the grand jury presentation of the matter of the death of Juwan Dallas will not be released before the appropriate time. The Mobile County citizens that serve on any grand jury must and will remain free of any outside influence as they make their decision. Please know that the Dallas family is in our prayers and we are moving forward with our investigation as expeditiously as possible. Sincerely, Keith Blackwood, Mobile County District Attorney, 13th Judicial Circuit.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Ms. Karen.
Mr. President, as discussed with you, um, earlier and also others, there's just, uh, one sentence that really stands out and that response is, is that the citizens of Mobile County must remain free to make a decision based on any outside influence. Last week, the media ran with a statement that somewhat said that we have reviewed the evidence and we have found the officer to be involved, not to be, not to have been cause of death or to whatever that is. The media ran with that on all three stations over and over again. So for the DA to state that no outside influence to taint the individuals listening or to hear the case, it seems as if though, I mean, there is information out there already that may have people thinking that, um, everything was okay with what happened before it ever goes to grand jury. So if we need to make a statement to correct that or to get that right, then, uh, I, I don't know how we do it. But in my mind, uh, when I heard that over and over and over again on the media, seems that we are, have our, our court ahead of our horse here by saying that we've seen the evidence and we don't find anything wrong.
And again, Ms. Karen, that was the city. It wasn't city council.
I understand.
So make sure you get that identified.
Right, well, someone from the city made this statement for it to run with the media. I mean, it ran in all three media cycles. It ran for a couple of days. So for the water to be tainted, I think the possibility of water being tainted has already been done.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important to remember that when this incident occurred, an investigation was launched not only within Mobile Police Department. It was turned over to the district attorney and also to the Justice Department. And the Justice Department is, uh, conducting their own independent investigation of this matter. A Justice Department that, uh, is under the Joe Biden administration and headed up by the Attorney General Merrick Garland. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Michelle Simons.
Is that all right? Can you hear me? Good morning and thank you for allowing me to speak. I signed up to speak about the Juwan Dallas case, but I'm, there's so little factual information that I'm not going to talk about the case itself because I don't, I'm afraid of muddying the waters further and I don't want that to happen. I do want to address this, the context in which we are all facing this very, very painful situation. I appreciated the movement I felt last week, but I have to say that there seems to be a feeling among members of this city government and the council that citizens are not supposed to complain. Those of us who question decisions or stand up for underserved neighborhoods or residents have become the problem. But this is not how democracy works. Citizens elect members of government. We pay your salaries with our taxes and we do job reviews at the polls. I don't think this administration and this council are really fully aware of the level of bad faith that has been created by a lack of information and follow-through. The second larger context is history. It was a video of a white police officer kneeling on the neck of a black man until the man called for his mother and died that woke many Americans, I should say woke many white Americans, to the reality of police treatment of people of color in this country. Over the past few months, citizens of Mobile have watched a police officer beat a man who was handcuffed and lying face down on the ground. We have watched a citizen video of a young girl being thrown onto concrete pavement. And in the months of July and August, four people died in the Mobile Metro Jail. I think everyone in this room knows that most people who go into policing do it because they believe they can do good. And most police officers do good. But as in every line of work, there are police officers who are not able to do their jobs. Those with histories of trauma, addiction, and violence that causes them to overreact and make brutal, sometimes fatal mistakes. Citizens must feel that government and police leadership can be courageous and honest when this happens and let the public know. I have one request. I ask that in the next few weeks, this council share with these concerned citizens what steps the city can take to train its officers, especially in incidents involving people of color. And that we will have a report from this council on the report that, um, a councilman just referred to from the DOJ. I'd like to be able to see it or at least get the substance of it. It would be one step toward really being open and honest with the public about this incident and, and a series of incidents that make people doubt what we're hearing. It's not, it's painful for all of us and I know too that you are all public servants and are here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betty Martin.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. My name is Betty K. Martin. I'm speaking on Juwan Dallas transparency. His mother has the right to see the video. She has the right to know how her son died. I think that been so long and she did, still doesn't know the cause of death for her son is ridiculous. And I just wanted to say I think she should be able to know all that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Tony, all good?
Good morning.
Morning.
Tony, all good? You know, we learned a lot last week. We learned that the two officers involved in Juwan's death were deemed no safety threat to the community. And that they were put back on the street. Even though, uh, the grand jury case had, had yet to be presented. And then we learned that it was said that the officers were not responsible for his death. He was alive before he was approached by the officers. And yet, they're saying they not, weren't responsible for his death because he was, uh, beaten and tased twice. You take your victim the way you, you find them. If I have a thin skull and somebody comes up and, an officer comes up and hits me upside the head and I die, you take the victim as you find them. And I understand wasn't the case whether or not to indict them for the killing of Juwan Dallas was, was to be presented to the grand jury. Well, that's already been decided. You know, we've heard from representatives from the city that the officers were not responsible. In law school, we were told how easy it is to indict someone or not, and it's true. Professor told me you can indict the pope. Depending on how you present the case. And we can only imagine at this point how this case was presented to the grand jury. It's not the officer's job to serve as judge, jury, and executioner. It's a responsibility of the officers to serve and protect. Yet this is not the case in poor communities or communities of color. There's a serious problem out here. People in the community of color in poor communities do not feel that they are being protected by the police.
Thank you.
Marvin Charles Lou, Jr.
Good morning, Counselor. Good morning, Administration. Good morning, citizens of Mobile. I am Marvin Charles Lou, Jr. As I also am troubled by the lack of transparency dealing with not only this issue with the Dallas case and the Jones case from March. I see an even greater issue that seems to be being overlooked and that is the rise of gun violence here in the city of Mobile. As you all know, for the last umpteen years since I've been here in Mobile, my passion and mission has been to help eradicate this issue. What we continue to find, children are dying on our corners. People are dying in our communities. And because it has become such a, a normal occurrence, it seems to be overlooked and not swept under the rug, but not addressed as passionately and powerfully as it should be because we are dealing with other issues in our city, which is understandable. That is why I feel like Habakkuk when I must say, watchmen, what of the night? The night is dark. The night is dim. The night is dingy and the night is dangerous. That is why I'm asking us to recommit ourselves to be a, to be a community of power. A power of community that is strong as we come together as one for the greater good. And at this time, the greater good is finding ways to give our young people better opportunities to take their minds off of retaliation, to take their minds off of violence, to take their minds off of getting even. Not only children of age, but children of maturity. Because regardless if you are 70 or 60 or seven years old, there's a, there's a, there's a place of maturity that must be, must be reached in order for you to be able to handle situations. That is why I'm asking city council to please go back to your districts and create Power of Community conversations. Seeing where our community is, what the tensions are, what the troubles are, what the challenges are. And then identifying those in your communities that can be those spokespersons for peace and those conduits for change so that Mobile will be a safe place to live. We no longer want to be the top five of the first 48. We want to be the top five of Home and Gardens or better communities across this country. I thank you for their time. I thank you for your consideration. And tonight at 7:00 PM, we will start the Power of Community by a social media flashpoint across this city saying we want to live because we desire peace. Again, thank you for your time.
Reverend Jim Flowers.
Good morning. My name is Jim Flowers. I'm rector of All Saints Episcopal Church. I want to also first thank this council for listening sincerely to the concerns of the Dallas family and to us who support them regarding the tragic death of Juwan Dallas. I recognize that this council, this council has no direct authority to grant our requests for making available the documentation and analysis of this tragic event. But I also recognize that you have influence. In fact, you have the most influence of any with the mayor's office. That's why we're here Tuesday after Tuesday pleading our case. We ask for your formidable influence to require the powers that be in this city to do what is just and what is right. The city attorney who was conspicuously absent from the council meeting last week told us a few weeks ago that it's a felony violation of state law to release the toxicology report and the body camera video footage. That is not altogether true. The law, as you know, is ambiguous and there are ways, as shown in other Alabama cities, to release pertinent and vital information to a victim's family. The mayor's chief of staff has been granted the opportunity to see this information. He even brazenly offered an interpretation of it at this council's last meeting. Is that legal? Does that not undermine the process of justice? Certainly, Mrs. Dallas and her family have more of a right to see the toxicology report and the body cam footage than the mayor's chief of staff. The Dallas family is in the midst of profound grief and withholding this information only amplifies and undermines that grief. Truth delayed is truth denied. And when, and when, may I ask, has telling the truth not been the right thing to do? They are at the least entitled to the truth and they are entitled to it now. Use your influence, please, good people. The excuse that we keep hearing is that the grand jury has to investigate the details of this event. But the officers involved in this tragedy are still working on the street. The chief of police has stated publicly that they present no danger to the public. Does that not in fact prejudice this case and the investigation of the grand jury? We have a systematic problem in this city and in this country in our policing African-American communities. Black males are profiled disproportionately relative to their white counterparts. Incidents identical to Juans across this country are too many to name and secrecy only intensifies the problem. That's not my opinion. That's solid proven social science. We could do a great service here to take one small step in dismantling this systemic injustice by just simply sharing the truth. And the truth, my brothers and sisters, will set us all free. Thank you very much.
Reggie Hill.
Sure, it's, uh, going over this podium here. Seeing that the rules say we're supposed to address the chair.
Lisa.
Lisa, you need to correct that.
What now? Oh, I'm just saying the rules say we address the chair, so I just want to make sure that we're in compliance here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And before I begin, I do want to, uh, I do want to thank Ms. McCants for coming down as well because for years, um, I know that I have articulated about these small business resources being in place and there are people who qualify for it as well, uh, the people who apply. I'm getting to, I said before I began.
Full names before you start speaking.
I'm about to give you my, my, Mr. Small. I'm about to give you my, my name, sir. Um, but I do want to thank her for coming down. We need to address that. To the citizens and stakeholders of, uh, Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. Webster defines prudent as acting with or showing care, uh, and thought for the future. There's a proverb, 27 and 12, uh, to be exact, that states a prudent person. There's a proverb, twenty-seven and twelve, to be exact, that states, "A prudent person foresees danger and takes precautions." The simpleton goes blindly on toward danger and suffers the consequences. I arrived today to continue a conversation about giving proper regard to citizens, communications, and economic development. I just want to address a couple of these things as it pertains to citizens' communications. I'm really confused about the letter as well. I thought it was kind of a bluff in a sense, but here we are. But what I what I don't understand is, why wouldn't the city just drop the case? And then we could apply to state law. If the state law says it's available for us to see the information without it going to the grand jury, because this and this is no spite to Chief Prime. I think that he has to answer to a couple of people, and that's why he's proceeding the way that he is. But why not just drop the case? And then we can release the information. As well, communications, we see that Ms. Law came down here discussing her property. We got about a ten million dollar increase going over to the city center, yet we don't have a copper penny on the inside of the building yet. And yet she has something that her infrastructure is destroyed upon.
These items that he's speaking about are not on the list of things he said he was going to speak about.
Mr. Small, if Mr. Davis, as usual, is just giving me time to make my point, he will learn that this has to do with economic development. I could have sworn the resources that we put into building structures and taking care of people's properties and creating buildings and parking lots, I thought that was economic development. I would like to have my time to be accounted for as well for him interrupting me. I also want to look at citizens' communications. We we have sent various claims, and I just don't understand if there's some type of time window in which you can relay information back to people as we submit content to you? And if there's not something on the books, I think that's something that we need to to consider. And and people, you know, that these type of actions here, when, again, as it's been addressed, we pay your we pay your salaries, but these are the things that are more concerning for you. How you how you look on a camera? How you look at this meeting versus how people are suffering in the streets? We're approaching 2025, and I'm hoping to God that people are paying attention to what this is. Not about you personally, but what you're willing to make decisions on. You willing to stop somebody from speaking to say that they're off topic when we're talking about spending our money? Willing to keep turning these families around and wait until we get the most people in here? When we have the most people signed up, when this lady had been coming down here for months to finally send a letter? We're not applying the law to what's going on, and then we're the ones who look bad. I don't think my time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Well, we know we don't have enough time. We send that back to rules committee, too. Thank you. You're on the floor.
I've got a question for the administration.
Oh, Mr. Carroll.
It's a hard question to answer to ask publicly. But how did we make a determination on evidence given on whether or not the officers were clear of any wrongdoing when the evidence is supposed to be secret? And how were we able to make that statement publicly when evidence is supposed to be secret? I mean, I I just don't get that, and I need an answer. How are we able to do that?
So if you would, restate your question, just so I know I got it right.
Well, according to all the statements that I've heard about the grand jury, that the 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 investigation and evidence is all secret until the grand jury meets. So how is it that we can make a statement that we've seen evidence and that we found the officer no wrongdoing with officers or that the officers had no cause of death and put them back out when all of this is supposed to be secret information? How do we make that determination? And we still have the DA saying in his investigation that he can't make that determination, but we've already have.
Sure. So you have two different standards. One is our determination is based on actual evidence. We didn't release the evidence and talk about what the cause of death was or was not. But that doesn't mean we're, from an employment standpoint, that doesn't mean we're ignorant of it. So we can make a determination from the employment side without releasing the evidence. Evidence still hadn't been released, and you're correct. That information is still secret under the Grand Jury Secrecy Act. We have no determination whatsoever about what the grand jury will or won't find. They can still go one way or another, but based on the information we know, we act on that information.
But don't our actions send a false positive to the people that'll be on the grand jury?
So I don't know that. I'm telling you, I don't know that. Could or couldn't. I don't know that. But what I'm telling you is, if we look at the evidence and we make a determination that the officer's actions, we know based on cause of death, the officer's actions weren't the cause of death, then we have to make a determination, because you think about it, okay? The officers are employees, and if you you don't find any wrongdoing in an employment stance, then we put we put them back into work, okay? So because we can't, we can't keep them off of the street if we're making that employment side determination. But we still don't release the evidence. And I understand what you're saying. I completely understand what you're saying.
Mr. Woods, that was the biggest circle I've ever heard yet. I I'm sorry to say that, but you just ran me around in the biggest circle I've ever heard yet. If we have the information and we're able to make a public statement that we can put somebody back to work and we have the evidence that we've used, that we've given to the grand jury to say, "This is clear," then why can we use it and the family can't? Because it seems like there's a double standard there.
So I get what you're saying. Those are those are political statements. I get it. But let me give you a legal.
What statement?
Those are political statements.
No, no, it's not. It's a truthful statement, and I'm not trying to be political here. I mean, we just we we continue to sit through this, and the more I hear, I feel like if I was one of the juries on the grand jury, that my perception of the truth would already be tainted based on everything that I hear in the media and everything that I'm here and see. I've already made a pre-qualified judgment.
So what we can't do is release the evidence. We have not done that, right? I mean, nobody's released the evidence, right? And the actual release of the documents or the information, no one has released that.
But we've made decisions based on evidence that we've seen, which in cases just is is a prelude to what the evidence suggests or that you're seeing that the evidence suggests. Even though it hasn't been released, we've made decisions based on what we perceive the evidence to say, which then again taints, or my perception is, is it may taint the public opinion.
That I understand. Probably if understand that that's your perception. I get it. I will back it out and say one thing. We haven't released the evidence. However, the counter is, the counter is that we would not make a determination of of doing anything despite despite what we need to do, what's fair, all right? We have offered to meet with the Dallas family and talk to them about it. That that offer has been made. The chief of staff has said as much. That offer has been made. We've made that offer. It was declined. Doesn't matter why it was declined, but it was declined. We have made that offer even before making this determination.
Yeah, we 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 made a determination of innocence based on the officer or officers involved, based on the information we have by putting them back to work. We made a determination there.
So so now?
Point like, I I don't I don't even know where this case is going, but the more I listen, the the more my thinking just it it just goes in one way or the other. We've made a determination of innocence with the officers already, whether I know their incident or they know their incident based on information and 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 the and the 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 information that we have and the evidence that we have. But we're saying that same information and evidence is secretive now that it's at the grand jury, but it can't be too secretive if we've made a ruling on it.
So I'll tell you this, okay? So we don't make a determination of innocence or guilt, either one. And I think it's important. We we can't make a determination of innocence or guilt. I I get the perception, but that is a different standard. The standard that goes whether or not this will be billed or no billed, that is up to the grand jury. And I get what you are saying, but the counter also has to be true. We cannot make a determination of innocence or guilt, no matter what people perceive. The secondary part of that is knowing the information, and we keep the officers off the street, one way or another, presumes guilt.
It's our job up here to serve the public and and to be as clear and transparent as possible. And when I start to hear these things, and I talked to the chief of staff about this yesterday at length, when I start to hear these things, it brings the biggest concern is where are we as a city and what are we telling the people that we are supposed to protect and serve? You know, it it appeared, the appearance of of a non-transparent system is here. And as I've told you in the past in our conversations, when we look in the rearview mirror, this is the treatment that we've always gotten. And and the heightened concern is now getting bigger and bigger and bigger. It's growing. At what point, you know, do they get to a breaking point and demand it in other ways? You 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 hear? Because we have it, but they don't. But they want it. At what point do they get to a breaking point and demand it in a different type of way?
I hear you. And let me back up. I hear you, because that's, I think the statement about people looking at things can't be lost. And and the discussions that happen in this room, the complaints, that's going to be natural. I I think we want to take you all back to why we started this process. The city doesn't press charges, okay? These aren't charges to be dropped. We made a collective decision some years ago, and people talk about the issue of transparency and oversight. We made the decision some years ago that when there was an officer involved in custody death, that we were going to subject ourselves to a certain level of scrutiny. That scrutiny is the district attorney's office under under the penalty of criminal prosecution submits the information to a grand jury. That is not a requirement, but we made a collective decision to say, "We're going to have immediate oversight, not keep it bundled up, but hand it over to the district attorney's office for grand jury proceedings," meaning if there is wrongdoing, if there is wrongdoing, there is a outside process at the state level. A district attorney who does not answer to this council gets to make that determination. Secondary to that, we made a collective determination to hand it over to the federal government, no matter who's in office. Hand it over to main justice, not just the local, so that FBI can come in and look at it and say, "This is" because people were calling for independent independent investigations. So we give you a two-step independent investigation. The counter to that is that you end up with dealing with the Grand Jury Secrecy Act, and the federal government, as thorough as it is with all of its resources, takes a great deal of time. But we subject ourselves to that level of public scrutiny.
But don't you mean a three-step, Mr. Woods?
Right.
Because we've already made a determination on our investigation, and then there are two others. So in essence, you're telling me that there are three steps, because we've already cleared our guys based on what we perceive the information to be. So again, I mean, I think that there should be i- i- if 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 there is evidence one way or the other, then what the media has heard and seen needs to be cleaned up. Because if it if we rush to give our information to the grand jury, then why did we rush? I mean, there's this is a third third officer-involved shooting this year. Is that right?
This is not an officer-involved shooting.
Third, uh, uh, Charles Street, Christopher Jackson, I mean, Christopher Jones, and then this one. This is the third one this year.
This is not an officer-involved shooting.
Well, officer-involved incident, let's put it this third major one this year. So had did we follow the same process on everyone, the same timing, the immediate getting information to the grand jury? Some were slower than others, you know? So I just, again, it I think that if if the city has information that clears its officers, that is clearly available, that we made our decisions on, then I think that if we can make a decision, that it ought to be free enough for us to help the family with the same information.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President.
Ms. Ms. Gregory and Mr. Penn.
I know, just 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 a follow-up, just to make sure that we are clear. No matter what the Mobile Police Department's internal investigation showed, this case on Juwan Dallas and what happened would have gone to the grand jury.
Correct.
No matter what. And what we heard last week was what the Mobile Police Department's internal investigation showed.
That is, that's correct, based on cause of death.
Based on the
So when it goes to the grand jury, then they get all of the information and they make their own decision.
That is correct, as well as main justice. So
And the Justice Department.
Right, sure. So it is a, and we will often say three-tiered process, but two-tiered, outside, independent.
Correct. And the grand jury could come back with an indictment. We don't know.
That that is correct.
And then there is more, right.
Mr. Penn.
Hey, Mr. President. I have a couple, just a couple questions on Mr. Woods. If we have a city employee that's under investigation because of employee situation or in other departments, would they be allowed to stay at work?
Ask that question, so you're asking me if we had somebody who's under
Another department and they're under investigation, would they be allowed to stay in their assigned job?
Well, actually, they are allowed to stay in their assigned job. So unless they're unless they're at at likely able to be likely able to either harm themselves or the city in some way, they're allowed to stay in the job. The secondary question, though, is, are they allowed to stay at work? And it depends on what you're dealing with. So once they're, once you make an employment determination that this is happening, this is this is was one thing happening, and we have reached the stage, they're typically still still in the office. We don't necessarily send everybody out on administrative leave, okay?
Yeah.
Sometimes we do. Sometimes we do. But typically, once we make a finding, you're able to be at work.
I guess it is just my concern is that anytime to this matter that you have an investigation in place and you have due those officers return, say if that investigation showed that they were wrong, now you just had officers out for a whole year, you know, dealing with the community, and now they're being convicted.
Right, right. And and understand, so so, Mr. Penn, let me answer your question even even more specifically. If a person is being investigated by an outside entity, and there has been no finding of guilt, then they would be allowed to stay at work, as long as there was no internal finding, all right? So that, yes, they would be allowed to stay not only employed, but at 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 the job and in the job and doing the work. That that would actually happen. Now, if there was a determination of guilt, then there is a personnel board process that we go through based on the determination, and that is standard across the board, across all departments.
So could the council have the authority to put some policy in place that if someone is under investigation, that they shouldn't be returned back to work?
Unfortunately, no. The council does not have that authority. Specifically, I reference eleven forty-four C thirty-seven. That is the powers of the mayor. So and then I reference eleven forty-four twenty twenty-one, which is the powers of the council. So all administrative and executive functions deal with employees. That's a great question, though, is can, does the council have any ability to do that? So no. The Zogby Act, when we're referring to eleven forty-four C thirty-seven, Zogby Act places all administrative services employees under the authority of the administration, only subject to the personnel board and the Zogby Act itself.
But it does allow us to set policy. It does allow us to set policy.
So, yeah, that was my next. So we could set policy in place because we had the legislative branch.
So I refer back to eleven forty-four C twenty-one, and I've often said this to Mr. Penn in private. If I told you that the that the love of money or versus, money is the root of all evil, if I said, "Money is the root of all evil," you would say back to me, "No, the correct versus, the love of all, money is the root of all evil." If you leave words out specific, the council sets legislative policy. That is in eleven forty-four C twenty-one. If you look at eleven forty-four C twenty-one, you read down seven sections. There's a specific provision about setting policy or giving orders or directives to an employee. We seldom reference it, but it is there. I've never used it, but it's there. And so that is what prevents you from making such a policy.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Carroll.
Also, in the Zogby Act, it calls for the council to have the ability to take up any type of internal investigation or call for one. And if the council were to use that authority to take up that internal investigation, then policy would set place would would then take that place of having the then policy would set place, would then take that place of having the employees and the mayor administer those responsibilities to those policies under that. Now, this council hasn't chosen to do that while I was here the last time or this time. But in response to your question, the council could invoke that if need be.
So I just want everybody to be clear. Those are two separate, two separate policy issues, okay? The council, Mr. Carroll was 100% right in that you have the power to investigate with five votes anything going on in the city. Mr. Carroll is 100% wrong when he states that those policies would go into the employment setting or setting a policy. So I agree with him.
Follow that procedure, is what he said.
So what he's able to do is, you are able to investigate any of those things. But a directive to an employee, no matter what form it takes, is a violation of the law. Because it's state law, not at the local level. That's what you're dealing with. I'm glad to answer any of your other questions. I think this is a difficult task to deal with, it's a difficult subject matter. I understand that the council has very limited input when it comes to state law and what happens in the district attorney's office. But understand that the administration is in that same boat when it comes to the discretion of whether or not to release information when it comes to Grand Jury Secrecy Act. One city, one problem.
Thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Orders is held over. 02047, orders to provide for the reapportionment of the seven council districts for the City of Mobile.
So moved. Second. They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
34050, orders to amend Chapter 34, licenses and taxation of the Mobile City Code.
Move the layover one week.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Consent resolutions held over. 371170 and 371171, a recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license for the Cam Lounge on Dolphin Island Parkway, and for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to Despite Ultra Lounge on Highway 90 West.
So moved.
Second. They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
CIP resolutions held over. 091186, transfer funds from capital project CIP parks improvement, Taylor Park improvements to project grant match holding account to be used as a match for the land and water conservation fund grant.
So moved.
Second. They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. 141102, approving application seeking permission to incorporate a capital improvement corporate district and authorizing such incorporation.
Motion to hold over until 14 November.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I was laid over to 14.
No objections. I'll take the remaining items together.
Oh. We clear? We're clear.
21164, authorized contract with Tetra Tech for disaster consulting services. 031187, appoint Robert Lasky to as Executive Director of Public Safety. 031188, appoint Johnny Morris as Chief of Mobile Fire and Rescue Department. 031189, appoint Lucky Robinson to the Mobile Airport Authority. 031190, appoint Sidney King to the Mobile Housing Authority. 081191, approve purchase order to Cyrus Ford for police package trucks. 081192, approve change to purchase order to Cyrus Ford for 49 Ford police package trucks. 081193, approve purchase order to Sun South for John Deere tractor for public services. 131194, authorized change order number one with Blue Diving and Salvage for Three Mile Creek dredging project. 21195, authorized contract with E. Cornell Malone for roof replacement at Hope Community Center. 31196, accept covenant of purpose, use, and ownership between the city and the U.S. Department of Treasury for Segment 7 of the Three Mile Creek Greenway Trail. 601197 and 1198 are authorizing settlement agreement and mutual lease agreement with Solid Waste disposal authority and agreement release of claims in University of South Alabama.
So moved.
Second. They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Mr. President, before we move forward, can we ask these new appointments to stand? Our Fire Chief, Public Safety Executive Director? Mr. King was here. Is he still here?
Nope.
Or Mr. Robinson? Okay, well, congratulations. Thank you.
Orders is being introduced, 88051.
For council rules, this will lay over for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced, 031201 through 601204.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of this resolution.
Second. Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
031201, appoint Carbine Adams as a full-time judge of the Municipal Court. 601202, approval award a special bonus to the Administrative Services Employee of the Month. 601203 and 1204 are determining appropriation to Marching Cougars Band Booster Club and Princeton Woods Homeowners Association served for public purpose and approved payment.
Second. They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
And can we ask Judge Adams to please stand? Congratulations.
Resolutions being introduced, 011205 through 311218.
For council rules, these resolutions will lay over for one week. And with the exception of 081208, which I am asking to waive the rules for immediate consideration today.
Second. Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
081208, approve purchase order to Civic Plus Inc. for one-year subscription plus implementation of agenda management software for City Clerk's Office.
So moved.
Second. They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Announcement. Next week's meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 8.
District 6, Councilman Woods. No announcements. District 2, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Downtown Mobile Alliance is hosting a developers' meeting where they're teaching individuals with the thought and knowledge base in line how to be developers of individual properties. I'd ask that you all reach out to the Downtown Mobile Alliance and Elizabeth Sanders and Stevens and her team and get any information that you can. The information will also be in our newsletters. Again, today, we passed the reapportionment of, that was caused by annexation. Certain areas of District 2 will somewhat change, but won't take effect truly until '25. I'm open to meeting with any of you in those changed areas as the time progresses. And thirdly, to the administration, there is another pothole to China as we've talked about, right over at the council elementary school in the rear. I think it's at either the end of Warren or Cedar Street that has been there for quite some time. It's approaching a year and a half or two. I'm asking that we take immediate action on that. The neighbors have started to call once again, and it needs some immediate attention. I have sent pictures with the barricade that is now, the only thing showing in the barricade is the actual light on top of the barricade, and the barricade is deep in the hole. Thank you.
District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District 1, Councilman Penn.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight at 5:30 to 6:30, we're inviting everyone out to Bishop State Community College. They will have their trunk or treat on the main campus. Come out, have a good time, save fund for the family. Thank you, Mr. President.
District 5, Councilman Davis. District 7, Vice President Gregory. Anything for the administration.
Motion to adjourn.
Safe Halloween, trick-or-treating.
Properly.
Just only a second.
Second. End of discussion.